Access point to a major highway. You can do different types of residential uses adjacent to the, to the, if you have a piece of property that's within that distance and the, you have to, well, at least do, a minimum of the 20% of the land would be developed for a non-residential purpose. So if you add a tract that was, it was 50 acres, at least 10 acres of that would have to be residential, the rest could be, I'm sorry, 10 acres would have to be commercial, or not, other than not, other than residential, would have to be that, and then the remainder could be residential. So that's another thing that was added.
And, and I think it was done because, say, an interchange out like the Turnpike Commission off of the Raising, it's unlikely there's gonna be, like, an Applebee's and restaurants like that, bigger chains and things like that. So that'll at least bring some commercial, again, you've heard us say a lot of times that commercial uses is our better tax base. And, and that'll at least get some more practical, smaller commercial uses in that area because, you know, face, we understand, we're not gonna get big places there, hotels and things like that, in that, in that kinda area that's still remote, even though it's a state road and a, and an interchange.
That's really the two highlights from the planning commission.
Yeah, right, and that's why we're actually having another, basically, hearing on this to, because they're kinda major changes.
Okay, Tom, I talked to you about the mixed-use commercial, and I gave you an example of a property, and you said at this point in time, it's mixed-use commercial light. Is that down here as far as light bakery, bicycle shop? Is that, is that what would be considered light, mixed-use commercial?
Sure.
Okay, so...
We, we have a mix of, we call it convenience commercial, and, and those are all our light uses, what we call convenience commercial for residents, that basically they're compatible with residential areas.
Okay, so...
So what's the question?
Okay, we, the piece of property that I called you about and asked you, at, at that point in time, you said it, it is mixed-use commercial, and you put the word "light" at the end.
No, I didn't, I didn't put, I don't, the piece you're talking about isn't, it wasn't earmarked for commercial yet, but we haven't got to that point yet. I mean, that's, that's the next subject we'll be talking about, what areas we're gonna rezone to these two categories. We just can't, couldn't do any rezoning till we actually created them. So this doesn't do any rezoning, it doesn't signal any, uh, point to any property yet.
Okay.
So that's another discussion.
When do you think we're gonna be able to move forward on that?
Well, I, I think we want to now, because there, there's interest in the property by Morganza Road and South Point Boulevard, there's interest in the property up on Raising, so I mean, it behooves us to get on it now that we get, get this under our belts.
There is some interest as far as commercial coming into Cecil Towne.
Right, yeah, we need it, we, we have to work on it. Gretchen, look, you wanna say something? Look like you wanted to say something?
No.
Okay, all right. Having said that, anybody in the audience wish to make comments on it, or give us some input on the information we gave you?
Tom, make sure she's sworn in. How about, can, do you wanna do everybody who may speak?
Yeah, anybody who's gonna speak.
So just...
I never swear to people, they're gonna give their opinions. I use swear to your opinion.
I do, thanks. Okay, I just had a couple things. First, I just wanna mention someone was here, not me, well, in addition to me last month, asking for the MUC and MUR definitions to be posted on the public website. I believe it's Linda Boswell's sister, Lisa something, I'm not exactly sure what her last name is. Was this information posted on the website?
I don't know.
I don't think so, but I don't know either.
I mean, I'm not surprised no one else has any questions, 'cause I had to send an email this morning and follow up with a phone call to try to get this information. So if anybody else, and it's kind of buried in, buried in the special meeting section, it's not on the general township calendar, I, I don't feel like this was, I know it was running the Observer Reporter, but not everybody looks there, a lot of people look just on the website, and it wasn't evident that this meeting was happening, someone actually told me. So, and it wasn't, and the def, these definitions, I'm probably the only one here who has that, because I asked specifically via email, so this...
Did you just get it today via email, or you got it?
I, I requested it this morning, because I looked this morning and it wasn't on the website. I didn't hear back for a couple hours, I called Tom and asked him to make sure it got to me. So I haven't also had enough time really to review this in extreme detail, but I do have some comments. First of all, some of the definitions, like, we added a new definition for something called apartment hotel. I don't really understand why it's called hotel. I also don't understand how it differs from the existing definition that we have. This microphone isn't working.
We can hear, you're good.
How it differs from the garden apartment or other definitions that we already have. This just further confuses issues when they come before the zoning board. One thing I would have recommended, and I mentioned in the past, is the definition of a garden apartment is, and, and this came up with for anybody who remembers the Bunny's, Old Bunny's Bar or whatever, it specifically defines there being one common entry for all units. I think that's kinda arbitrary. I don't really understand why we have that. And if, if that's the case, then if this apartment hotel is gonna take over and be the same thing as a garden apartment, then garden apartment should be revised to allow for entrances not through a common entrance. So I don't see the need for apartment hotel and garden apartment unless you're gonna change one of them to be something that the other one's not.
Dan, would you take a note of that, because if, if we look that up and it's, she's accurate on that, then we can just remove that one.
Yeah, no problem, but I do recall that this was one of the recommendations that we got from the development community when they came in and looked at the ordinance.
All right, and the other thing with that, in particular Bunny's Tavern, I think he couldn't do what he wanted to do, it wasn't, for, he wanted apartments with separate entrances. He just wasn't allowed to do it in that zone at the time, so that, that really, it, it's not a question of the definition of garden apartments, he just wasn't able to do it.
The garden apartment definition specifies one entrance-
Right.
-for all apartments in that building. So we also had to give him a special exception for that as well, because it was gonna be separate entrances. So, I mean, I don't, to me, like, three stories is enough of a, of a limitation, right? Does it really matter if they come through one entrance, or they come through, you know, five entrances? I mean...
Don't you want more than one entrance anyways?
Yeah, I mean, for fire or safety reasons, I would think, maybe, but it just seems super arbitrary, and this is, these are the kinda gray area things that come up in, in the zoning board, that I just wish it was clearer so that we didn't have to make a decision about something that seems arbitrary like that.
All right.
The second thing that I had was home occupation in dwelling. This is another one of those arbitrary things, that the zoning regulation currently requires or allows for home occupation in a, an attached garage, but not in a detached garage. And again, I find that to be very, very arbitrary, I mean, if it's a garage, that's already on the property, and by the way, there's other, I have the reference here, but there's other provisions that say you can't add a garage to an existing property for commercial reasons. So we're protected from that type of thing happening, but if you buy a piece of property and you own the garage, what's the difference if it's attached to your house or not?
Well, I, I think the difference was that that's gonna be, if it's gonna be used for home occupancy, in other words, if another family could live in there. So, if your garage is attached to your house and there's a family living there, there's, there's one thing, you, that you've cho, you've chosen to do that. But if you have a detached garage somewhere on your property, it could be remote from your house and further closer to neighbors, then you're putting a, a fa, family in there, a family environment that doesn't meet any of the setbacks for, for a...
Sorry, I might've said occupation, I, I mean, I better said occupancy, what I mean is home occupation. So if you're running a part of your business out of a garage, it shouldn't really matter if it's attached to your house or if it's not attached to your house. It's still your property and your garage. I don't see there being a reason, because this happened one time, right next to Muse Italian Club, Everest Eats came and applied for running their home catering business out of that detached garage at that parcel, right to the right of the Muse Italian Club. And it seems so arbitrary to say, oh, because it's not attached to the house, they can't use it to, to run a home occupation.
All right, wait, wait, well, Dan, was, was part of the reasoning, the same thing, that if you're, if it's in a detached garage, you're gonna even run a business in there? That it's, it's not fair to push a business in a separate building closer to other neighbors that don't meet any setbacks for the business, for, for normal business on a conventional-
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that a home occupation in a dwelling is less intrusive than it is as one in a garage. I mean, I could run a, I could manufacture something in my garage, I wouldn't do it necessarily in my, in the house I live in, right?
Couldn't you also do it in your attached garage? Because that's allowed right now, is what I'm saying.
That's what you just said, you, you'd allow probably less serious things if it's attached to your own house than you might if it's remote from your house.
Well, couldn't we just specify that? Couldn't we say you can have lesser uses in attached or detached, but if you're gonna have more severe uses, then they have to be in detached only? Can't we separate them out? Because it seems silly not to...
You could, but do you really wanna home occup, don't you wanna home occupations to be like a, you know, like something simple, like a salesman making phone calls or...
Or hairdresser.
But what she's, but that's what she's saying, is that right now it allows for, like, anything in an attached garage. So if you're somebody, if you're, like, I can't even think off the top of my head, but like, if you're somebody who didn't care about having a heavy industrial use in their garage, but really liked, I can't think of anything.
Yeah, I, I don't have the definition of a home occupation, but it sounds like it's the definition that's the issue, isn't it?
Well, there's, there's like no impact, low impact, I don't have the UDO right now before. I think they all kind of already have to be that, so like, the example of machinery or something, machining stuff is maybe, maybe not applicable. What I was thinking more like, if, if a lady wants to put her beauty shop in her detached garage instead of her attached garage, what's the difference? If a person wants to package meals or do cooking in a detached garage versus an attached garage, what's the difference? I just find the attached part of it to be arbitrary. I mean, it could be detached and be five foot away from the house. Like, there's nothing there that, I, I don't know, I'm just asking for consideration.
But I'm just saying, that was the, the thought behind it, that, that, you're not gonna allow something more severe further away from your own house. And, you know, if that's not good thinking, that's, that's another argument.
So how much property do you have to have for a detached garage to do something severe in it?
Yeah, you can, in this, you can't do anything severe anyhow, it's, there's still gonna be convenience things and, and low-impact items.
I'm, I'm just asking to...
Well, that makes Kara's point even more, like, why wouldn't you be able to, if it's already limited by zoning, why wouldn't you be able to do it regardless of whether it's attached or detached?
Well, then you would just change, in this one, just make it home occupation, forget the end dwelling, right?
Yeah.
All right.
That's all you need to do. Is that, is that your point?
I, I think so, unless referring back to the other part of the ordinance is gonna say...
Yeah, I'm afraid it's gonna contradict.
Contribute each other, maybe.
All right, we'll, we'll check, we'll check that.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a way to, if the board wants to do this fix, there's a way to do it, but I think it's more than just striking the end dwelling.
Right.
Yeah. And then for the section five, that's under, so C, number five, under residential mixed use, do you wanna add apartment hotel there? If you're keeping that definition for apartment hotel, I would say you should mention that specifically in there, instead of just saying in things like that or whatever. I'm sorry, what section was that? Section, I'm, I'm sorry, residential mixed use, so that's section C, item number five A. It says this area permitted for multifamily and garden apartment uses shall, shall be limited to 10%. I mean, garden, the other item that's like that is that apartment hotel, so just to be clear, that that's also in there.
Yeah, but the, the apartment hotel, I think, is intended to be...
Reached by right?
Well, I, I think that's more of a commercial application, that's the way I see it. I mean, in the MUR district, this is strictly residential, so as we, as I know, residential would be, you know, you, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a hotel townhouse, I mean, I mean, it's a different...
If apartment, garden apartment and apartment hotel are actually two different things, which I don't believe they are based on the definitions. That's my only point.
Whether, whether we would ever get an apartment hotel is probably doubtful, but that was, again, just something that developers suggested along an interstate highway that might be a commercial use.
Okay. All right, I just had a question there, I'm sorry. Under number, the, the table at the end of mixed, residential mixed use, all the other zones, like R1, R2, R3, for purposes of the rear yard setback, they have definitions that state one setback limit for the principal structure and one separate setback limit for accessory structures. So I would say that you should probably follow that same pattern for this as you do for the other three zones. You know what I'm saying? So like, for example, rear yard setback in R1 is 40 feet from a principal structure, 10 feet from an accessory structure, except swimming pools, and, and so on, like with the other zones have a similar thing. One, one setback for the principal structure, one setback for accessory structure.
I think we do, don't we, Dan?
I mean, it's not on the sheet, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, she's right, it's not.
I, I think we address accessory structures as a separate part of the ordinance.
Right.
That's a, that's a whole separate section.
So, so they're gonna be built according to the ordinance where they're still 10-foot or a setback according to their zone they're in, whether it's R1, R2, R3.
All I'm saying is this same table in every other zone-
Yeah.
-states two different metrics in this table.
It's, it's a good point, we should check and make sure we have accessory structure setbacks.
Yeah, for sure.
That it's addressed somewhere within the body of this.
In this body?
In, in this ordinance, I mean, if, if it's just an add to something that's similar to the other ones, it's not a...
Well, yeah, it's already, like I said, you said it's already in the accessory structure.
It, it's sort of like a whole separate animal.
We can bring it back in there too, doesn't hurt.
Um, for commercial, sorry, moving to the commercial mixed-use section, is there a reason why we had to have the, these things like daycare homes, house of worship, greenhouse, tavern, kennel, dah 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 dah, as uses, conditional uses? Like, why can't they just be either, be uses by right? If it's commercial mixed use, I mean, why do they, why do they have to apply for conditional use on that?
Well, there's a bunch of them that are uses by right, and then there's uses by right along state roads, and then when you get to the, there's finally conditional uses under number five, like daycare home, house of worship, yeah.
But you're, and you're, the uses by right, you're allowing for more intrusive things than you're requiring like a daycare, in-home daycare to apply for conditional use, but you're not requiring for a bicycle shop to apply for conditional use. Like, there's no special, like, why not just hold these conditional uses under the uses by right if the point is that it's mixed-use commercial anyways? It just seems like we're creating, or, or a need to do a bunch of hearings that we probably shouldn't have to do.
Well, but you can, you can have a greenhouse-
Yeah.
-but, but if you want, it, it, under a conditional use, you gotta have at least a five-acre parcel to do that.
Right.
So that establishes a condition. I mean, taverns could be considered intrusive more than a bicycle shop, so I think the board would wanna have a conditional use if you're gonna let a tavern in, right?
I guess so, maybe, maybe tavern is a special example.
Not really.
Daycare home, house of worship, kennel, those things are all allowed.
But, but, but they're, but they're...
Those are all allowed in, in-
Residential under-
-under conditional use, they're, they're allowed in all our commercials.
But see, conditional uses allow us to be site-specific and lo, look at a, something on, way on Cecil Hendersonville Road, it might not have the same conditions that somebody might put like on a 50 where there's a lot more density, even though it's zoned for that. So that, that's the only advantage, if, if a business could have more serious impact on, in one place than another, that gives us the opportunity. I mean, if it's conditional use, we might not put any conditions on other than the express criteria and standards that are listed for it to begin with.
And, I'll drop it after this, but like, things like daycare home and house of worship and kennel, we already allow those under conditional use in residential, why wouldn't we expressly allow them in commercial? Those other ones, to, to Dan's point, like, the tavern is one that maybe I would say, yeah, that makes a lot of sense for conditional use, it is more intrusive of a use, but...
Even a kennel, even a kennel, you, some, some kennels may not require any conditions on it, but it gives us the opportunity to look at it and look at the neighborhood. That, that's the only reason, if we think it...
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but you're already allowing commercial in that same zone, but then you're saying that these have to have special consideration when a veterinary animal hospital doesn't have to have any considerate, special consideration. That's all I'm saying, is you're, you're making a conditional use for something that's less impactful, in those three cases at least, that, that would make more sense to conclude.
Tom, could Dan just review them and make sure that what we're asking for conditional use makes sense?
Well, I, I understand that, but to, to me, a veterinary office, it was almost the same as a doctor's office, a kennel's all, all storages of doc, of animals, veterinary, and that's incidental to their business of just an exam room.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying, can Dan take a look at the list and just see if there's things that maybe it doesn't make sense that we don't need a conditional use hearing for? Because we don't wanna be in here six times a month for conditional use hearings when we pass this, because we're making-
Right.
Yeah.
And, and the only thing I'd say is-
If we take something out, it, it, or switch it, it's no, it's, it's, won't be a major thing, but look at it.
I'm gonna defer to this listener on that.
And then, the only final thing I say, and I'm done, is that I, I am concerned if you move forward with approving this right now, that there are people in the community who had concerns. I didn't, I wasn't able to get them the documentation that you provided me, but you all promised that it would be on the website and it wasn't. So, I mean, I know you advertised it, but you didn't provide this documentation to the public, so I would think that you should wait, because you're gonna have some angry people come back.
I don't know that it wasn't on there.
It wasn't, thank you.
I'm surprised that Jack didn't have it on there. Anybody else have any comments or questions about it? All right, Dan, some of those things, could you...
Tom, I think she had a question, did you have a question, or you, I thought you were raising your hand. Yeah, you're good, okay.
Dan, some of those things, could you, we talked about trying to clear up a couple that, those ideas of the home occupation and...
Yeah, absolutely. But just, just clarification from the board, under the conditional uses, I think that the daycare home, daycare center is a, that, that's a valid question. I mean, does the board consider a house of worship a conditional use?
No, I don't feel like...
Parking?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's always a parking issue.
Yeah, it's always a parking issue.
There, there are once-a-week sometimes, activity in...
The greenhouse, I, 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 I think that can be an issue, I mean...
Like a greenhouse that people visit to buy stuff, or a greenhouse that you set up on your own home? I think they're two different things.
No, I, I think we're talking about a commercial greenhouse, but you can have a greenhouse that mostly sells plants, but you can have a greenhouse that stocks all the material, the mulch and the rock and the gravel, so...
That's what I mean, you need a, so maybe one that's, provides commercial that would need to consider parking?
Well, again, the use is gonna be a mild, there could be a mild greenhouse just to retail. I knew a guy who used to have one in Cecil, wasn't, he grew plants, he didn't sell mulch, he didn't sell anything, he just grew flowers and sold them.
Yeah, so it's, it's florist excluding greenhouses is, is a use by right, but then a greenhouse, it's, it sets up a minimum of five acres with a 50-foot buffer. I mean, I've seen greenhouses within residential areas, I mean, they can, they can occur.
Right in Bridgeville, up at St. Clair.
Right, but, but you, but you, but you, if you have these, if you have these parameters in, and that's why you make it a conditional use, so I think it's applicable there. The tavern, we already talked about, kennel, community residential facility, and then a court adjudicated home. I, I just think that, that those, those, those things might, those things might require some, you know, some conditions by the board.
Well, before we put, have a clean copy, we might adjust some, we're adjusting some definitions, I think, on some of those things that Kara suggested.
Yeah, just, just to recap, 'cause I have notes here, the question was related to the apartment hotel, is that the same thing as a, as a garden apartment? So we'll check that out, Gretchen and I can work that, whether we need, need that or not. And then it just comes down to, then I think the comment was, do we need to have these in conditional uses, or should they be a part of the use by right? And what I'm hearing from the board is, with the exception of maybe A that we talk about, that they'd also be conditional?
I think it's basically just looking like we're, it's more of a high-flow traffic area, you know, that's what the conditional uses are basically used for.
Right, exactly.
We don't wanna have, you know, tons and tons of cars in and out daily whenever...
Like up on Grange or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, that would be...
The commercial, the commercial stuff, you're already saying that's okay anywhere you go. You know what I'm saying? And you're applying the commercial requirements to that.
I think the difference, though, Kara, is in a commercial zone, everybody's gonna be a higher flow of traffic because it's a commercial zone, in these, because it's a mixed-use district, there may be some areas that are residential and some areas that are commercial, so you want to make sure that if you're gonna approve a commercial zone in that mixed use, that you're not putting a high flow of traffic or someplace where people can't park, because there's residential right next to it.
But everything that's zoned, mixed-use commercial, is going to be able to have commercial. Right?
No.
What do you mean?
No, 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 no. There, there is use categories in each of the zones, so there's not gonna be indiscriminate mixing of a commercial next to a residential home in, in the mixed-use category. It's not mixed-up use, there, there's gonna be designated areas on a tract of property, and under mixed-use commercial, some will be commercial, but some will still be residential. So they're not intermixed.
So it's not gonna be commercial, residential, commercial, residential, commercial, residential, there's gonna be a section that, because it's gonna be like a, like a Lawrenceville or something, where it's like a section of it is all commercial over here, and then over here a section of the same, of the same will be residential, but they're not gonna be like every other thing.
We're trying to let commerc, or property owners have a little bit more say in their, in how their property develops.
It's only insider.
Yes, basically.
It's a lot like racetrack road.
It allows for that, like, live-work-play type thing, so you can have, like, areas that were, you can have areas that are, like, more commercial-heavy and areas that are more residential, so if there are people that want a townhome, but they can walk to an Applebee's or, and every time I say that, I think of the song, but, like, every, walk to an Applebee's they can, where other people want to live in a strictly residential zone or a strictly commercial zone, do you understand?
Yes, Cindy's right about that, South Point is zoned SD, it's, it doesn't, it's not residential, commercial, or industrial, it's SD, special district, but inside it has land-use categories assigned to, like, some residential, some commercial, some industrial, so it's a land-use category within a zone, the same zone.
Trust me, I didn't get it at first either, Tom and I went absolute rounds over this, until one day I was like, oh, I, I understand what you're saying. So I can show you kind of what, what helped me figure it out. It's, it's basically kind of updating, 'cause zoning in the past has been so strict, especially here, where it's just, just commercial here, or just residential here, and it doesn't allow, we have developers and people coming in saying, well, we'd like to do a little bit of everything, kind of like South Point or like Cool Valley was. It allows us to be able to do that, and allows people who are moving those areas or have land in those areas to know that that's what is gonna go there.
Go ahead.
It's just like...
Can she, you have to come to the microphone, that's okay.
It's just like at the end of Racetrack Road, there's all the businesses and then there's the housing plan above it.
Yes.
And those people walk the Planet Fitness or whatever, we need something like that here in Cecil Towne.
The other good example is in...
Planet Fitness or just a...
The other good example is in Safeway at the Hastings Development.
Yes, yes.
That's really, I think that's more what you're kinda shooting for here.
Hey, so AC Roland views, um, so, oh, sorry.
Where's your right hand? This one, please. Someone's got a testimony about giving me the term.
Give him testimony, give him a P.
I think you just take your name again.
A, like apple, C, like cat, R-O-W-L-E-N-G. So my question in regards to that, now, would this be like, you mentioned live-work spaces, would this be like they could have a, a coffee shop below and two apartments, four apartments up above, or would this be like having in South Point where they have designated, okay, this is all, you know, just like the tech companies and all that going on down there, and then the top four floors are apartments? Or is it like where downtown you have the downtown eateries, and then there in the center is that high-rise building with, what, five stories or whatever? Is that more what you're talking about, or is it gonna be more like individual islands of, okay, this is zoned, these are for two-family homes or duplexes or however, right? And this is the Speedway or a library or a coffee shop?
All right, I, I wouldn't call them islands, but what you talked about where there might be businesses with apartments above them, that's a whole nother different kinda category. I don't know that we have...
Okay, you mentioned live, live-work. Okay, you mentioned live-work.
Well, in different areas, not necessarily above each other. Now, there is merit to have like a town center like that. South Point, downtown in, South Point in their town center, originally the plan showed a lot of that, business underneath and apartments above. Then they dropped that idea. I guess the developer at the time, he decided not to do that. But we actually had a draft ordinance that would have accounted for that. But then he dropped the whole idea and we have, you know, we have the town center there, but we have what we have, but there aren't any apartments above it. He just, I guess he thought there wasn't a market for it.
Okay, then my other question in that work area. So in this semi-residential area there that you're talking about, would it be allowed to have ground contaminating type businesses? Like gas stations or, you know, wellhead water transport stations or?
Not the mixed-use residential area. Now, in the commercial, it doesn't even allow a lot of the serious uses that a true commercial zone allows. So it's, if anything, it's going to be milder commercials in the mixed-use commercial, very mild uses in the mixed-use residential.
Okay, is there any way that we can see what you guys finally decide on before you actually sign anything? Because like with going on, what's going on at the Flure plant, some of the things that were signed are coming back to bite us. So as a community that it's affecting, I think that we should have the ability to, once you guys get your final draft, whatever, talk to lawyers. And all that, we as taxpayers and we as neighbors that have to live in this live-work type community.
We have a final draft. Well, listen, we have a final draft. We get some suggestions like this and Dan's going to make some minor adjustments because they make sense, the definitions and some of the, to clear some things up. But we have a draft.
Okay, well, so that almost to me sounds like it's a done deal.
It is.
So it doesn't have this, our input is in no way going to affect you. You guys already done a backroom deal on this.
No, it'll be done.
That doesn't seem appropriate for us.
We, A C, this is our second hearing on this. So this, and there's.
I think the first was online.
Yeah, and so we do, I do agree with you and Kara, we need to get this posted to the website and it wasn't. We're making very minor changes from the last time Kara sits on our zoning hearing board. So she's giving us endpoint, input, oh my gosh, input from what she has experienced from zoning hearing board. But take a second, hopefully we'll get it up on the website by tomorrow. Take a look at it, if there's any minor changes.
We'll run the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
So can we see what our zoning and code enforcement people have to say about the bill that you guys are presenting, says it's kind of there, it's what we pay them to kind of funnel the information through to us? And I haven't seen any reports of anything from our paid employees of those departments, of the zoning department, I'm not sure of his name, Mike maybe? And then what is the other lady's name, Liz? Isn't she part of the, I'm sorry, I'm not good with her name, but I was thinking it was Liz? But I'd like to see what the people we pay to kind of oversee these things have to say in regards to what you guys are proposing, instead of just feeling railroaded like you guys, like you said.
That's unfair to use those words. If you would come to a planning commission meeting, you'd see Liz here or you'd see Jack here? And they give input all the time, so they gave it. You're acting like they're left out of it.
So more the common people can see it?
It's on the website, it's on the website.
Okay, I looked for it and couldn't find it, so I must have.
Go under, go under the.
Darlene, it's not yet. It needs to be, but it's not on the website yet.
The planning commission meetings, they advertise it when they're on?
Yeah, but this actual document.
Oh, no, I'm talking about, he says attend the planning commission.
Oh, yeah, you can watch it.
You're talking about the last meeting, oh, no.
Well, the one that you're saying that the people we paid to cover us in zoning and in, you know, our code enforcement people, what they actually had to say that helped you guys.
We've been working on this for a year now and they come to every meeting with the planning commission and there's input, we've worked on this for, like I said, a year.
Okay. Well, it'd just be nice as us as voters not to feel like we're being railroaded. And I'm not saying you are, but that's just how we, a lot of us feel. Because, like you said, this is a done deal. This is just minutia at this point. So it just kind of makes us voters feel a little.
All right, okay, you made your point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're getting close to our other meeting. I think that the board members have any other comments? If not, we're going to, we'll close this hearing and in 10 minutes, we'll start our public meeting.
Tom, I want to go into an exactly the same.
Yeah, yeah, we have 10 minutes.
We have 10 minutes.
What were we talking about? Yeah, yeah, we need 10 minutes. Yeah.